Call the March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two City Council meeting order. Commissioner Banks, if you give us the prayer pledge and the fact of the day, please.
Heavenly Father, we come before you again this evening. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the city. We ask for your wisdom and we ask for your, your hand upon us as a people. We thank you, Father, that you continue to bring us through the challenges that we faced and lift us higher. And so, we honor you this night in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day, on March sixteenth, nineteen forty-five, fighting on Iwo Jima ends. The West Pacific volcanic island of Iwo Jima is declared secured by the U.S. military after weeks of fiercely fighting the Japanese. When all was done, more than six thousand Marines died fighting for the island, along with almost all the twenty-one thousand Japanese soldiers trying to defend it. One of the most iconic photos from World War II took place on Mount Surbachi, where a half dozen Marines raised an American flag at its peak using a pipe for a flag post.
Okay. You have the minutes in front of you? Anybody, any corrections? If not, look for motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen. Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Presentations, D.O. and Paul, I guess, or just D.O.? You got your backup if you need him, right?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Deodat Budo, the Public Works Service Director. I will be making two presentations tonight. The first will be the update on the roadway resurfacing schedule and subsequently followed by the update on the cross-connection program. On December the fifteenth, twenty twenty-first, a summary of the roadway proposed to be resurfaced for fiscal year twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-second, twenty-third were presented to this board, as well as a paving approach, which were melon overlay, Cape Seal with micro-surfacing, and coal-in-place recycling. A brief explanation of these approaches, as well as a proposed resurfacing schedule for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-two, will be presented tonight. The melon overlay process is, is a simple, from the diagram, it is one to one and a half inch of existing pavement is milled and removed, the areas then swept and an attack coat is applied, and the asphalt, new asphalt is in place, as you can see from the second photo there, from the paver, and the asphalt from the truck in here. And then afterward, well, the surface is rolled. That is, is a simple process of the melon overlay. It is adding, you remove a structural course and you add a structural course. Those roads that we plan in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two was Rogers Road, and that's scheduled was March the fourteenth to the sixteenth. As I'm here for tonight, that road was already milled, as you can see in the pictures, that was happening in March of fourteen. And today, I'm pleased to inform you that the road is already paved. Striping is need to be done, temporary striping, and then permanent striping will be, but there will be some more cleanup yet to be done, but that is completed. And the mill was then moved to Arrow State, and Arrow State Parkway was already milled. And I think the first lane of pavement was already placed this evening, by this evening. On March the twenty-first to the twenty-second, Lexington Parkway schedule, and the twenty-third to twenty-eighth Old Dixie Highway will be done from the diagram there. Subsequently, Royal Oak State subdivision and Maple Oak will be next, and that is scheduled to be done from March the twenty-eighth to March the thirty-first, and that is depicted in the picture. Cleveland Street, that is scheduled from March the twenty-ninth to April the fourth, and Armando Porras Way is present for April the fourth to April the eighth. So this is the schedule for all the melon overlay roadway that the contractor had given us, and he's on schedule to meet them. On that list of the twenty-first, twenty-second that was presented to you, we also have a set of roadway that was selected for treatment. And those treatment, I'm defining Cape Seal, and that is defined as is a surface treatment in which a pavement surface is sprayed with emulsified asphalt, immediately covered with aggregate, rolled and then a fine coat of either Fox Seal, Slurry Seal, or micro-surfaces add. Cape Seal provides a skid resistance, sealing the pavement against moisture intrusion, protecting the pavement structure from further oxidation and raveling, and restore a uniform black well appearance. Now, surface treatment, as you can see from the picture here, this is what you call the road colorized oxidation, and the road do not have too much of distress. So this is a treatment, is a, is a method to this road, and it was protect the road for about, you know, seven to eight years. It able, is a cheaper method, and it's structurally sound, but it's a, it's a treatment course that is applied. Now, those roads that we scheduled to be done by this process was Fifth Street, Forest Avenue, and Eighth Street. What had happened here, I have changed that process from, from the Cape Seal to melon overlay, because after coordination with the contractors and decide, some of these road have some asphalt slippage, they are minor base failure here and there, so I feel that process will not last as much. So I prefer to, so these three road was changed to melon overlays from, from what the previous was presented to you in December. And the rest of the roadway for Harden Oak subdivision and North Washington Well Avenue, that is structurally sound, it remain good, and therefore Cape Seal will be a good candidate for that, and that is the process. If you look at the schedule, these are tentative schedule, because the contractor yet has to submit it to me their, his cost proposal, and then I will have to get the deal reorder, or appeal, or purchase order, and then he will then give me a more defined schedule. But he told me that he's going to try to finish all these road before this schedule, but, but I still are waiting for their fee proposal. Pines of Wakiva is also the Cape Seal, it's a good candidate, and therefore all this roadway will be done by the Cape Seal process. Now, those road that, that was just presented to you as melon overlay and the Cape Seal, all those road were already funded in the fiscal year twenty-first, twenty-second budget with funding allocations. Now, on this process of coal-in-place recycling, this process only apply for roads that is really heavily degraded with base failure problem. We have one of those road in the city, and I will define the process back, but it's the other road. In this reach of this roadway, this road, as you know, is a wash road that we have in the city. So this road, you cannot apply melon overlay on neither those, you have to rebuild the base of the road and then apply the surface pavement on it. So coming back, this is, this is, is a very good process for this, is a, is like you're reconstructing well the road. So what this process is, it defines the coal-in-place is a simple, quick, and economical method for constructing a new homogeneous, flexible, stabilized base. This include mixing of the existing asphalt surface course with underlying base and subbase material, or subbase material, then add a stabilized agent to produce a flexible stabilized base of six to fourteen inches. The mixed design will then determine the stabilized agent to be added, asphalt emulsion important cement depending on the existing well material, and virgin aggregate or reclaimed asphalt pavement can be added to meet degradation well requirement. Now, this is a specialized equipment that is doing all of this work. So I just want to, this equipment here, you have a cement tanker which is in front, right of the roadway, they're going to layer a thin layer of course of, of cement. Then you have an emulsion truck. That emulsion truck has all the binders and everything else that is, is needed. And then the C.I.R. well machine is, that is a sophistication, the sophistication of this process. That is going to mill the asphalt, within that well machine composition, they're going to break the existing asphalt, mix it up with the base, there's a screen to screen it, and there's a pulp mill in that well machine, which is going to mix the material with the emulsion. And immediately, what will happen after that, you'll find that the material will then discharge into a paver, and it would immediately lay, lay down a base course. That base course will be in place for about, you know, four to five days to cure, you know, you can drive on it, but you have to get a proper compaction test. And then finally, a pavement surface will be placed on top of it. So really, you're rebuilding a road with one process pass, right? And, and not close the road down, it was still open for traffic, and it's all done with the suffocation of this machine. That's the reason why it's called coal-in-place cycling, is a specialized type of, of machine. So that will be happening there, and the schedule for that process, I think, is mid-April twenty-twenty-two. As again, this is, is a contractor who will then pinpoint me a definite schedule. What had happened to the rest of the roadway, we have those definite schedule was provided to the city website, and then we also provide door hanger to the resident, so they know specifically what are the dates that we will be that enabled. As soon that these dates are buttoned down to a definite, the same process will be followed. We, we will put them on the website with a specific date, and then the door hanger will be provided to the affected citizen. The funding for, for the other road is coming from the Canora virus, I think is, is federal, local funding, right? So I think I got it right, I hope, but that is special funding that in December the fifteenth, I think, it was placed in order for me to do that for one million dollars. This is an expensive process, so that is the funding for this road is coming from. So with that, that is all of the road that is listed for twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. I don't know if you have any question on that.
Questions?
Just with the others' road, how long do you think that will take?
As an estimate, you know, that would take some, it would take about approximately ten days.
That one's ten days.
It can be less than that, but that is my approximation time, time I will, I will ask the contractor on board, because whether everything else are going to affect that, that cannot be done in, if there's rain or something else, you cannot save it.
So all the roads that you have presented that will be repaved, how long after that will the striping follow?
They will have temporary striping on those roads, and subsequently, it is a schedule it should be a week after, right? Because you have to, about a week, and then you can put the permanent striping on those roads.
Yeah, I was curious on the striping, when we get to the permanent striping, is that the type that has a high reflective value in it? I know there's different types of paint.
Right, they are thermoplastic and they are paint, right? I think in our case, I think some of the road has thermoplastic, which is a reflective type.
So we'll have some in some places and others. What determines which will be where?
Basically, I don't have that number with me, it could be in the code, right? So, but some of them I understand will be thermoplastic, especially where there's stop signs and everything else, right? Along the, the middle of some center line, I think it's paint.
Yeah, I really, I like that product, so.
Will the road, will the striping have, because I've noticed some striping has those little reflectors for night? Does that come with those striping?
Yeah.
You know which ones I'm talking?
Right, right, right.
The little reflectors?
Right, well, if the existing road have them, they will have to replace them.
Okay.
Mr. Becker?
No questions, just comments. First off, thanks for the restriping on, on Lester, that happened a couple weeks ago, so it looks much, much better. You can actually see the stripes, which is fantastic. And I think it does have that higher grade.
Higher grade.
Paint to it. And then two, I would just, my only feedback would be to make sure that your website is up to date because, or even add language in there to say that it is target dates, because I'm looking at the schedule right now, so like Rogers Road, March fourteenth through the sixteenth, I'm not sure if that happened yet or not, but if, if they are target dates, just make sure that this is refreshed.
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
Rob?
Yeah, the next presentation will be on cross-connection update. On February, well, the sixteen, twenty twenty-two, an update of cross-connection was provided to the city council. Another information was posted on the website, including that presentation. On March the ninth, we had revised the cross-connection guide that include frequent asked questions, and that had been posted also on the website. And, and that guide would also included with the utility building, billing. In the previous presentation, which is the one of February sixteen, we inform you about the moving forest strategy. And as a recap of that, we said that the proofless of backflow test contractor has been provided to all customer with the letter that we sent them. We said that residential customer pay, may elect to have the city perform the required backflow testing for a cost of sixty dollars, conversion of the backflow device for three hundred dollars, and any repair will be based on the item that is on cost, well, on the item's specific needs. The city will perform these service, and we build them in tree insulation. That was the moving forward recap of the last. Here, in progress, this is what took place. The city of Apocca residential customers began to take step necessary to comply with the notice of test, letter they receive, and staff receive phone call which a group as follow. Customer requesting more information in regard to the backflow preventers they need at the test, customer requesting for the city to perform the required test, and customer that would like to get the conversion done by the city, customer that need an inspection to determine if the device need testing, and customer that have already scheduled a date with a private certified tester, or test has already been done and would like us to verify that we have received the information. These are all the type of the group of the question that we have met. Now, below is a summary of all the information that we have received thus far. Call received from customer were one thousand eight hundred and eighty-six, customer requesting conversion were two hundred and seventy-seven, customer requesting test was five hundred and twenty-six, test result received from the contractor was one thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight, and conversion received from contractor was seventeen. We are continued to getting these calls and these dates, so we, this will be a fluid number, we continue to change. On the compliance update, as part of the pollution prevention project to offset the thirty-four thousand dollars in penalties, and the city proposed to purchase of an electric vehicle to, to FDP that would have environmental and economic benefit. This was stated on the last presentation. Well, I'm here to tell you that one of the vehicle was purchased and has been received now, and that, that is shown in the picture. When compared to a gas truck, an EV, electrical vehicle, has zero tailpipe emission, while a gas truck will generate an estimate of fourteen thousand pound of carbon well dioxide if driven fifteen thousand mile per year. That is just some, some information there, how useful an electric car is in helping a little bit of the environment. Now, two charging station would also be installed as a part of the project. One would be at Northwest Recreation Complex, and you can see from the picture, it is located, this location, and the other one at the Public Service Building and relocated there. Those are proposed site, they yet to be installed. In summary, the customer requesting inspection are being completed as received, the customer requesting backflow prevention testing, and also backflow prevention conversion, that will start on Monday, April the fourth, twenty twenty-two. Customer will be contacted a week in advance using the contact customer information they provided us. And on our inventory, our inventory side, we have three hundred and sixty dual-check backflow preventers currently in our inventory, and one hundred are currently on back orders.
One thousand, one thousand. One thousand, not one hundred.
Oh, yeah, one thousand, seven, right. And, and because of the supply chain issue, DEP is working with the city on the timing of the installation. So, so this is really a summary, an update of the, from the last presentation that was provided to this board.
Mr. Becker, any questions? Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, actually, I had wanted to bring this up, I was going to bring it up later, so glad that you covered this. There's just been a lot of confusion, I know, I'm assuming everyone has been getting the same emails, and the concern, I just wanted to make sure that there's a clarity for the people. It seemed that many of them were under the impression that it was the city that was responsible for maintaining the backflow preventer. And I want to make sure I have clarity, that I'm explaining it correctly, that this is something that is part of the individual homeowner's system. When you get a, an irrigation system put in, it's part of that system. So this is owned by the homeowner, not the city, correct?
That is correct.
And so, and I've, I've kind of explained it in the sense that, just like we have filters for our air conditioner systems, if for some reason they deem that it could be harmful, and they put a mandate that we would remind them to check their own system, we don't have that, but we do with the water because of the, the possible issue of, of the siphoning from a broken line. So basically, this is just our responsibility, and where we hadn't done, what we had missed was just simply reminding them for their own sake and their own healthy, their own health, that they should be testing these on a periodic basis. Am I right so far?
You are correct.
Okay, and that's where some of that confusion has been, because there was the impression that because we didn't maintain, and we were supposed to have, that's why people now are getting these big bills. And so I've tried to relay that, and so the, the best place for them to find that information that we explain it in that way would be on the website, as you've stated here, so.
That's correct.
I guess the last question I would have is, I know we had talked about, is there way, looking at some of the systems, I think Commissioner Becker had brought up something that some of the others have done, where they've just gone ahead and charged a fee by the month. Obviously, it would need to be higher to cover the system. Is that something we've still looked into, that we're considering, or are we just kind of starting here and keeping it open in, in case this doesn't flow well for us?
That's a good question. In fact, we are just going with the information that we provide to you, there is no discussion that I'm aware of any other alternative.
Edward, I mean, I guess I could just weigh in. I think what we, the problem is now that we've started the program, we've got to get everybody in compliance. At that point, if we want to take it on as a city responsibility on a monthly basis, we could do it, but for us to start in June, when you've got a third of the people have replaced, then it wouldn't be fair to them to start out with the three dollars a month when the other, that haven't done anything, would get the three dollars a month. I think we got to kind of wait till we get everybody into compliance, and at that point, we want to take, take another look at it. I know that Orange County, Paul, have you heard, aren't they, they're in the, why don't you come, come on up? You know, obviously she worked, this is what she did in Orange County, and I know that they're in the, I think they're in the process of, of looking at, at the costs and how that...
Yeah, I can't imagine how they're not. I mean, because I, I mean, I just know from being in the office that the, the contractors weren't able to get it all done, and, and, I mean, I wasn't part of the contract, but that, that three dollars has been for years. And like I say, they had us going out testing, so I think they, they needed extra people. But, but yeah, like you say, we've got this all going now, we would at least have to wait to the second year when this is coming up again, because too many people have already, well, I had to pay for it, why didn't they have to pay for it? So, yeah, the best time to look would be, what, six months before, two years from now, when this has to be, when they have to get their things tested again.
So my question is, would be then, is this something that is charged every homeowner or just those who have backflow preventers?
Well, yeah, everybody who has irrigation system.
So it's only charged the extra three dollar fee, and, and for us to cover just the testing would be a five dollar a month fee, because that's...
Yeah, at least, probably.
So we, we really need to cover those costs, otherwise it starts putting my cost for my system on another taxpayer who may not have that system, and I don't think that's the right way to approach it. And so they do that, does that cover replacement of a bad?
I don't think it has, I'm not, I wasn't in the financial part of that, I was in the field, so I wasn't privy to some of that, but obviously you can't keep it at three dollars for five years with everything going on and repairs. But I, I think also, as far as when you were talking about where the customer's responsibility goes, our ordinance specifically states the difference between our system and the customer's system, and it's always been that way. Anything past the meter is the customer's device, I mean, they own it, so yes, they're responsible for maintenance. And that's not just us, that's pretty much across the board, unless you do something like Orange County where they own the device even though it's on private property. But no, when we did the, the polling of the, of the other cities around here, everybody is like, it's on the, on the customers, so, yeah. And we, we don't get those kind of questions anymore. In the beginning, it was, why now? Why me? What is it and where is it? And now it's more, I'm having trouble getting a vendor, you know, and so we say, we'll go back to the website, because we, we change that all the time, when people send me, new people have come in with their credentials, and then I send it to Kelly, and then she puts it on the website.
And old people are taken off if they are...
Yes, yes.
Getting out of line on pricing.
Yeah, that's the, the thing that we just, we've got to be able to protect them from people who are just unscrupulous in their business practices. So, you know, there are those who want to, who prefer to do it for themselves, we want to keep that liberty for them, obviously, but then there are many who would say, I just would prefer that the city handled that, and it's a fee, and I don't have to think about it, you know?
And they do.
Set it and forget it.
And some say, can I give you my credit card over the phone? You know, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Some are appreciative of the, of the three month, the, the charge that's going to be leveled out, they're saying, oh, 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 and they're surprised, oh, really? Great. And what we're doing is, if they, they ask us to test, and it fails, then they'll say, go ahead and do the conversion, but try the test first. And so, the sixty for the test is rolled, is credited toward the three hundred, we're not charging more than three hundred. And since we were doing that for people that we're testing, if they say, hey, I, I used this other vendor, he was forty-five, we're rolling that into the three hundred too. So we're giving, I mean, because, you know, it's, a lot of them, a lot of the vendors are charging more to convert than we are. So they try another vendor and do the test, but when they find out it's more than they call, hey, it's already failed, just go for the conversion.
So at this point, people can call and opt in, and it's simply prorated over three months rather than a monthly fee added on. Does that mean once they call and say, listen, I just want the city to handle this, you know, and add it to my bill? Do they then every two years have to circle back around and ask the city, or from that point, is it...
Well, if it's, if they're doing the conversion, there's no two years. The conversion is to the dual, and it's every five years.
Right.
And it would only be replacing the parts, which, right now are twenty bucks. So in, in five years, well, or four years and eleven months, we'll send a letter out saying it's time to do your maintenance, and again, they can choose...
So they still, at that point, still are then responsible to again ask the city do it again?
They can, we'd give them that option, but they could choose a private.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the big issue, is there are those who are wanting to say, listen, I just want this settled so I don't have to remember, I might miss this five years from now, kind of thing. So anyway, this is definitely a step in the right direction. One of the final main issues was there was a concern that the fee that we were charged, which you addressed, that we bought the vehicle with, that the fine was, this was a sneaky way to pass it on to the public, and I want them to understand, that is not what's going on, that was a separate issue, and that's been mitigated through the purchase of the vehicles, and, as, you know, as D.O. had explained.
And the way the consent order was worded, you couldn't buy it if you were already going to buy a vehicle. So, so anybody who was already getting ready, rid of a car and buying a car, that was already budgeted. So because this was in lieu of a fine, it had to be something that was not budgeted.
Right, and so it's not something passed on in a sneaky way to the people.
Right.
That just, when they begin to understand, as, as I would discuss it with them, there was one who put even the word in, in the email to me of what the service person had said to them, because Apocca has been negligent, it's, I have to charge you this much more, and it's just, that's not right.
Well, in, in the, in the fine was not based on the backflow preventers, it was based on the spill.
On the sewage overflow.
On Memorial Day weekend, because I was out there at IFAS, as they're digging the hole to find the pipe that had twisted, so it's nothing to do with this program, it had to do with the back, because every spill, you, I guess it's after the second or third spill... or third spill, we had the big spill out on, on Vic Road. And so that was our second spill, so that was, that was the reason for the, the fine.
And it, because it even says in their consent order, by gallonage, that it was determined by how many gallons it defined.
Yeah. So in lieu of the fine, we had, we got to buy a vehicle that we needed anyway for the new, the new backflow test position. Yeah.
Well, again, I'm just glad those things are beginning to be clarified. And, you know, we, we had a short time to do the rollout and there was some confusion involved, but I'm glad that we have that on the website and hopefully different ones who may watch tonight can understand that more. And I am still in favor of that other option, if that becomes something that's just more feasible in the future, so.
And then, just, just so you know, for everybody out there listening, it's P A Brown. I should have said that.
Yeah, Paula Brown.
At, at, at Apopka.net.
At Apopka.net, oh, yeah.
Yeah, P A, Paula.
Yeah, P A Brown, at Apopka.net.
Yeah. Good. Commissioner Blaskis?
No, I have to say Commissioner Banks covered up, covered a lot of the questions and you gave the answers.
Okay.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you, Dio.
Okay, agenda review. Edward, any changes?
No changes, Mayor.
All right. Public comment.
We have Rod Olson. Thank you, you take cover.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane, Apopka. Mayor, Commissioners, a couple of things. I guess I'll start off with backflow preventers. I believe the city should take this on, period. It works for Orange County, it works for Altamont Springs, there's no reason why we can't. I've not talked to a homeowner, and I talked to a lot of homeowners, that says, oh, boy, let's do this, I'm messing with it. And then the one fee, as you're aware of, up to almost $900 in doing it. As far as dealing with people already, we have homeowner one, they, they didn't do anything the city does it. Start the $5 charge. Citizen two, I did the two-year thing, two-year waiver, then you start the five-year, five-year, $5 charge. Citizen three did the five-year unit, five-year waiver, then start the $5. I think that's an easy transition. It's, it, it's painful. Next, I have a couple of things. Call for action for the city. I think that each of you and Commissioner-elect should go around the community between now and the end of June, identify areas that look really good, congratulate those people, identify areas that need improvement, whether it's streets, whether it's sidewalks, whether it's four-foot weeds, identify it. And by the end of June, 1st of July, at the first meeting, establish a plan of action to move forward. And I think quarterly after that should be, should be done. Each Commissioner maybe take a quarter, but to make sure we're staying current. I think, and then the timeline, develop timelines from there indicating, okay, what's going to be done when, so you can communicate, communicate to the public for that. About two months ago, Michael Cooper presented and said, I'll bring a dumpster in, help clean up part of the city. Well, maybe we ought to create a city cleanup day, put dumpsters out, get the community out, make a community event and have fun.
April 5th.
April 5th. April 5th, all right, good.
Already done.
Glad to hear, all right. And then maybe a monthly recognition program down the road of, you know, who's got the most outstanding business, the best development, whatever the case might be, to identify, get people to move and maybe be motivated for that. Now, a call for action for our community. Just as maintaining your individual property, it's each citizen's responsibility to communicate our needs, wants, concerns, whether it's South Apopka annexation, backflow preventers, parks, recreation, traffic, potholes, street signs, stop signs, clutter, whatever the case might be, and pick up the phone and make a phone call. I call public services, police or fire. If you're not sure who to call, simply call 407-703-1700. That wonderful lady answers the phone for the city, will direct you where it needs to go. We have a responsibility to take affirmative action on our ideas, our concerns and complaints. We must hold you accountable, you as our Commissioners and Mayor, but we cannot lay it all on you. Part of it belongs to us. It maybe falls to the see something, say something. You know, we can complain to our neighbors till the cows come home and ain't going to get done. We need to talk to the people that can do it. The only way to be heard is to communicate, whether it's city departments, Commissioners, Mayor, county, state, federal government. Pick up the phone, make a call, send an email, send a letter. If you like something, communicate. If you don't like something, communicate it. If you have an idea, get that idea out there. If you have alternative ideas, communicate that. If you want to be heard, you must speak up and you must show up. In conclusion, if you choose not to participate, not to be involved, not to speak up and not show up, smile, accept the outcome and thank those that do. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you all for your contribution.
And I was wrong on the date, it's April 3rd, Sunday afternoon after church is the cleanup.
12 to 4.
Huh?
12 to 4.
12 to 4, okay. All right.
And, you know, thank you for that, Rod, because that's so excellent. It's so wonderful to have clarity on different things. I know I just had a list here a couple of weeks ago that someone did exactly what you said. And we were able to go around and I just checked with Edward, all these things are either already done or in the process of being addressed. And yeah, we can work together as a city like that. So it's, I just appreciate that. And, and again, I, I wrote down the steps of action here.
Susan, who's next?
Okay, Sylvester Hall.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, how y'all doing today? Sylvester Hall, 391 Rolling Hills Lane, Apopka, Florida. Before we move forward, just trying to follow the tradition, rules and procedures, is it required that we say our name and our address? Is that a requirement, Mayor?
I've always, we've always done it, I-
No.
It's, it's part of-
That can make it right, is that a requirement?
In, in the resolution regarding public comments, the speakers are to provide their name and address for the record.
Is, is it a requirement to provide your name and address?
In regards to providing a public comment, I believe is, under the resolution, the language states that speakers providing public comment are to provide name and address.
All right, you say you believe, so we'll, we'll check. But I want to talk about this, the, the election. And I, when you look at it for face value, the results, it is what it is. And I was told by a great leader that, Sylvester, if you don't know the big picture of things, how can you ever understand the consequences of your choices and the decisions that you make? And so when you, when I, when I look at the election and I take it for face, face value, you look at it, you get the results, 53%, 40, 46%, 100% votes, Mayor Nelson wins. So in that regard, when you always talk about how things are misleading and somebody can look at this, one person sees something and another person sees a totally different thing. So as I was looking at everything, and I always, you know, thank, serving for 21 years, we the people, everybody always come up to me on Veterans Day, thank you for your service. For me, the greatest way you can honor any military veterans, and this is for the public and everybody, that's why I'm here speaking out, is your vote and your voice. So Rod, the things that you put out, I greatly appreciate it, your vote and your voice. When you look at, we got 35,000 registered voters in the City of Apopka, 35,000. When you have 80% of them declining, to use that right, that, that civic right that we have, the most powerful thing that we have, decline, or just sit silence, don't do it, that is a major crisis. That is something that should be looked at by every mayor. Why are people disengaged? Why are people, and when you can simply mail it in? So that's a problem for me. And as a leader, we should look at it as a problem and we should do something about it. Because if we don't, we look at the news every night and we look at what's happening in Ukraine. People are dying, fighting for democracy, fighting for that right to be a democracy. And we use, we throw these words around and we use them so shalantly that it's almost just a figure of speech no more. It don't touch the heart, it don't penetrate the heart anymore. And we got to stop that. That is a major problem in this country and in the world. We have to stop that. So when I look at, why are people disengaged? We look at the election, we look at some of the things that took place, I'm not going to go over all of them. But people get discouraged. They think their vote don't count, their vote don't matter, and everything is going to stay the same. You only got a few people running the system and they're going to do what they want to do. And that's what is being allowed to happen. So moving forward, I want to let you know, principle matters. Procedures matter. Morals matter. Ethics matters. And the last one, Mayor, people told me a long time ago, you can, Sylvester, good looks will take you a long way. Unfortunately, I didn't have good looks. Talent will take you a long way. Knowledge and education will take you a long way. Line, cheap stealing will take you a long way. But the only thing that's going to sustain you when you get there is your character.
Thank you, thank you, Sylvester, appreciate it.
Mayor, remember that, your character is what's going to sustain. Thank you.
Sue Moyer.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sue Moyer. I live at 530 Sand Wedge Loop, Apopka, Florida, 32712. And I'm one of the 12 homeowners who lives on Sand Wedge Loop, who backs up to the 51 acres of Gopher Tortoise conservation land in Rock Springs Ridge. I want to make it clear that that 51 acres is a part of our subdivision. It is within the boundaries of Rock Springs Ridge, contrary to some information that a couple of our homeowner board members are trying to tell people that it's not within our HOA and it's not within our borders. I believe that it's very unethical for our HOA board members to try to swap the conservation area for a defunct golf course in order to prevent any potential building on the golf course. Why is it okay to build 200 townhomes on Gopher Tortoise conservation land when we've already been through the discussion that at the most, they can build 17 homes on the defunct golf course? Yet, as I learned last week, two of our board members had a meeting with the mayor and the golf course attorneys with a plan to make this happen. The HOA board members shared their letter of intent and what they were planning on doing with the mayor. They're not willing to share that information with us homeowners who put in a written records request at all. They haven't been willing to share any of the written records requests on any contracts, any letters of intent that they have received since we started this last year. I just want to share that with you. The board members have also said that they have spoken with all of the 12 homeowners on Rock Spring, on Sand Wedge Loop, and they haven't spoken with any of us. We do not want building on the Gopher Tortoise conservation land. And at the council meeting two weeks ago, on March 2nd, the mayor announced the deal, was very proud to announce the deal, with the Rock Springs Ridge Homeowners Association and the Gulf Group. And when Commissioner Becker asked why the mayor referred to cleaning up the PUD, the mayor stated, what we've got to do is give them the ability to build on the 51 acres. And we want to close down the ability to build any more houses on what's already currently there. Then why are we trying to let them build 300 townhomes on a Gopher Tortoise conservation land in order to not build on some house, some houses, a very few on a 320 acres? So my question is, why is the mayor involved in this issue? Why does he continue to take sides of allowing the building of Gopher Tortoise conservation acres in order to prevent the maybe, if they ever put together a plan, and it's been years that they have not put together a plan, to build the 17 homes on the 320 acres of defunct golf course? Why is it okay? Why is the city wanting to allow them to build on some, on conservation land? So I stand before you tonight to ask you to support no development on the Gopher Tortoise conservation area. And I'm asking for a motion from the city to recognize April 10th as Gopher Tortoise Day in Apopka.
Thank you.
How does that work, Michael, in terms of resolutions like this? Who's, like a proclamation, resolution, that sort of thing?
We're, we're discussing here a public comment. If a member of the public has suggested that to the, to the council, at that, at this point, staff can take into consideration and it'll be duly noticed at a public meeting, at a public hearing, if there's any, any action. This is public comment, there's no official action taken during the public comment portion of the-
No, I get that. I just, a, a piece of public comment piqued my interest because I don't, I'm not aware of the procedure.
Right. So at this, at this point, if, if, if it's to be, if the city council deems it to, to something to, to take under consideration, this would be something that'll be brought up at the next council meeting during official action, for there to be a proper vote to be taken.
Oh, and I also just wanted to share for the audience who doesn't realize what I shared, I handed out a Gopher Tortoise, Florida Gopher Tortoise Day that is in a Florida on April 10th. And many other communities also recognize that day. And so I was hoping that Apopka would get behind the initiative also. Thank you.
And David Hoffman.
So, I'm sorry, so where does that leave us with this? With, I, I mean, it's like we're silent up here, but-
You, you've received the comment, and now at this point, if you want to direct staff to present, to make a, to, to present a proclamation or a resolution, it could be prepared and then it'll be noticed at the next, at the next public hearing. It'll be on the agenda for, and if, if it's to be a resolution, you have to, in order to pass a resolution, it has to be done by a public hearing. So it'll be, if, if it is the council's intent to, to move and, and pass such a resolution, staff will prepare such a resolution for council's consideration and approval at the next council meeting, which is before April 10th. If the concern is you want to have this be declared on April 10th, the next council meeting does fall prior to April 10th.
Which we can bring it up at City Council Reports time, which I wrote it down there to discuss today.
Okay.
So, okay.
It's just that there, there, right now, there's no resolution drafted. I, I cannot advise you to pass a, an undrafted resolution, undrafted proclamation.
Like it was silent up here, so there's no direction. So I mean, we were given this and so I just want some direction.
Right. Well, I, I cannot give you direction, I can only give you advice as your counsel. It's actually, council would give direction to staff to direct the, the drafting and preparation of a resolution, if it is council's prerogative to have such a matter to be considered.
I think it's really easy if, if a member of our public is calling out the fact of, hey, we've got 51 acres worth of Gopher Tortoise conservation, that's not up for dispute, that's fact, right? For us to read a proclamation identifying April 10th as Gopher Tortoise Day, I think would be appropriate considering that, you know, we've got that acreage and interest in our resident population.
Yeah, I just, I wrote it down for us to discuss it at council.
Okay.
Report. All right, Mr. Hoffman.
Okay. Let me stop.
Okay. Good evening. My name is David Hoffman. I live at 3610 T-Side Court in Apopka, Rock Springs Ridge. Recently, an Orlando Sentinel local news article highlighted increasing Winter Park public citizens' resistance to the city government's practice of awarding unrestrained permitting to developers an expansive projects. It appears that the people of Winter Park have had enough of congested traffic, disappearing green space, and in general, compromised life quality. Apparently, Winter Park city officials are getting the message, slow down and demonstrate moral judgment. moral judgment in permitting any new growth. These Winter Park citizens have come to realize that grow, 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 build, build, build just as fast as we can go is unsustainable. Unrestrained growth and concomitant global warming are existential threats to our children's future. We who live in Apopka can only hope that this message could get through here, where business as usual, cheered on by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, chief mentor of Apopka City, was just sustained by the most recent election. The go-to old boys and one lady and their cheerleaders will continue, continue on. What about those who care about the erosion of life quality due to untrammelled growth, more congested traffic, more crowded schools with more children attending classes in trailers, hardly an optimal learning environment, more shingled rooftops in sewer lot line developments, less green space, more attenuated water supply, more crazy quilt nondescript panoramas? Who on earth is minding the store to protect the well-being of homeowners and our children? Clearly, with the monotheistic dynamic evident in Apopka, there is too little room for checking and balancing, which would lead to managed, smart, deliberate visionary growth. It will therefore be up to individual citizens and perhaps small ad hoc groups to appear at City Hall to serve as check and balance monitors, to assure, to assure that best practices of urban suburban growth are in play. Inevitably, this kind of citizen activism will occur to assure that Apopka City can be considered a future candidate for queen of the prom among central Florida cities. Hardly the case today. Apopka's past notable distinctions have been its spaciousness and reputation as indoor foliage capital of America. If there is a lack of moral growth oversight, this city may end up with a dystopian distinction of being the sewer lot line warehouse, trailers as classrooms, capital of America. But vibrant democracy practiced can mitigate the scarotic effects of unrestrained growth. May you pay heed and experience an epiphany. Now, I wanna respond to Sue Moyer and what she had to say about Rock Springs Ridge. I have, I have been at this issue with Rock Springs Ridge for 13 years intricately, and I don't have time to offer a response to what Ms. Moyer had to say. Instead, what I'll do is I'll send you an email with some issues that impinge upon what was brought up earlier. It's a major issue, and bear in mind this too, that what happens in Rock Springs Ridge has application to the whole city, entire city.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that it, Susan? All right. We have five items on consent. Does anybody need to pull any of the items? If not, look for a motion to approve the five consent items.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Can I just make one quick comment?
Sure.
You know, 'cause obviously, the first item on the consent agenda was ratifying the election results. And I just wanted to be up here, me as Kyle Becker, to say, I acknowledge and I affirm those results. Make no bones about it. I acknowledge and I affirm those results. I know that there's speculation publicly, but me sitting here, I acknowledge and affirm those. And like I said to Mayor Nelson that night, and I'll restate it here again today, I want nothing but the success for the city. You know, I wish the mayor success, I wish the city council success, I wish staff success, and I wish for the success of the city. I looked at our mayor race more as a, you know, we're battling for the position in the starting lineup, we're battling for first chair in the band, but someone's gonna win out, but we're trying to fight for the betterment of the same thing. And so I wish nothing but the best for this city, and it's been an honor and a privilege. I hope that I'll be afforded some time to make some final statements in, in April at my last meeting, but it's been quite the ride, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Becker. Okay. Public hearings, ordinance number 2900, Susan?
Ordinance number 2900. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city industrial for certain real property located east of Coral Hills Road and west of Clercona Road, comprising 1.34 acres more or less, and owned by E&amp;H Clercona LLC, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Jim, any changes?
No changes.
Okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter?
Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2900.
So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2901.
Ordinance number 2901. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from County A1 Citrus Rural District to IL Light Industrial District for certain real property located east of Coral Hills Road and west of Clercona Road, comprising 1.34 acres more or less, and owned by E&amp;H Clercona LLC, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Jim, any changes?
No changes.
No changes. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2901.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance number 2903 has been withdrawn. Ordinance number 2904.
Ordinance number 2904. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the code of ordinances of the City of Apopka by amending Part III Land Development Code, Article 10, Section 10.3, Use Classifications and Interpretation of Unlisted Uses and Zoning District Boundaries, Subsection 10.3.1, Principal Use Classification System to Divide Tobacco Shop, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, and Providing an Effective Date.
Okay, any changes, Michael?
No changes.
No changes. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on ordinance number 2904? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2904.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2905.
Okay. Ordinance number 2905. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated in being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Vision Car Wash 2 LLC, located at 345 West Orange Blossom Trail, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay. No changes. Okay, anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number, what are we, 2905? So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2911.
Ordinance number 2911. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, granting a non-exclusive franchise to Lake Apopka, Lake Apopka Natural Gas District for a 10-year period, approving the natural gas distribution franchise agreement between the City of Apopka and Lake Apopka Natural Gas District, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Michael, any changes?
No changes.
No changes. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2911.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2913.
Ordinance number 2913. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated in being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Robert T. Hutter and Elena J. Hutter, located north of West Kelly Park Road and east of Plymouth Sorento Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Michael, any changes?
No, it's not mine.
But it has Michael. Jim? No changes, all right. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2913.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2022-13, budget amendment.
Resolution number 2022-13. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, providing for a budget amendment.
Okay.
Edward? I'm gonna get this one. So this is the budget amendment. If you recall from your last meeting on March 2nd, we had you authorize the purchase of two parcels on Snowden Road for the water reclamation facility. This amendment establishes the appropriation to purchase that land. Seventeen thousand of that is for the, the parcel, the .34 acre parcel, and the 213, or 212 was for the parcel located at 556 Snowden Road. So a total budget amendment of $251,900 is what we're requesting in this resolution.
Okay, any questions for Edward? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-13.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. City Council reports. Commissioner Velazquez.
Wow, we went through this quick today. First, I wanted to say thank you to everyone who, who did come out and vote. I was really, I'm happy that we were able to provide six extra days for our residents to come and cast their votes. At the end, you know, when you look at the numbers, we, we did better than the last election, but I'd like to see more of our residents do come out and, and do cast their votes. And as one of the public comments said, and has said that, you know, our voice, our vote is our voice, and it's very important to, to be part of the process here in local government. Something that I tell people all the time, that the moment you walk out your door, it's local government that affects your life and your daily life and the services that we provide. And I just wanna congratulate our new elected commissioner, Nick Nestor. I've gotten to know him over the year that I served, and he was once an opponent and is now a good friend, and I've enjoyed the time that I was able to spend with him, but he understands now that we have sunshine. And so I wanna just congratulate him, and I look forward to working with him. And also to our city commissioner, Commissioner Becker, which I have worked with him over the last six years, and I have nothing but admiration for him, for all that he has done for our city and the contributions that he has made as a public servant. And, you know, I have to say personally, I have always called him Mr. Data, Data like from Star Trek, because he always came up with numbers and he was always able to figure things out so quickly on the dais, and I relied on that. And he will be missed, but I, I certainly wish him all the best as he continues in his journey and his endeavor when he does leave us. And I know that he serves on the Lake Apopka Board, which is something that I have served on, and I hope that we can consider to keep him on, 'cause he does an excellent job over there, just as we have our former commissioner, Mr. Aerosmith, serving and representing us on Lake Apopka. But that's something that Mr. Becker will have to consider, and certainly our mayor. So again, that's basically it. Thank you very much, and, and I'm happy to be back, and I look forward to serving our community and each resident, 'cause that is our job as public servants, is to serve our community. So thank you.
Mr. Banksen?
Yeah, a couple of things I wanted to bring up tonight. Number one is called the Locator 911 Lightbulb, and I actually had passed this along to, to Ed and to Sean. This looks like something just really, just a great and a simple, something simple that a fireman had basically created, but it allows them to find homes. It's a special lightbulb that sometimes, and it actually starts with a story that really moved him, a little girl lost her life because they couldn't find the home. And so this is something that can be made available directly, especially to those who have special needs, but to anyone, that basically, so they're looking into it, I kinda passed that off, but I just kinda wanted to make everyone else aware of it. I think it's something really worthwhile and, and something that, it's low-hanging fruit in the ability to, to make something happen, so I'll let you all look into it and, and go from there.
What's it called?
It's called Locator 911 Lightbulb. And I, again, if I can pass the information to you, I don't know if you can dispense that to the rest of the commissioners, just a look on that. We talked about the backflow preventer solutions earlier, and again, I, I do agree, I think it would be a simple way if we can find the way to bridge it there. I, I think just the, just the feedback that I've gotten, as long as we have the option for anyone who wants to do those things themselves, I think to present something that makes it easy for our citizens, I think that's a great route to go, so. I wanted to mention this, a little bit of confusion there, the election notification and vacate dates. Obviously, as I've mentioned before, I just see a real opportunity for us in Apopka to have a seat at the table. For so long, Apopka has been the community over there on the northwest side, and now the northwest of Orlando is really in a tremendous position moving forward in the future. And that's a big part of what moved me to, to seek this, this higher office. I just see it as another way to serve us here, I think there's a real benefit. But I wanted to just clarify, 'cause different ones have asked me, there is a notification date, and Commissioner Becker's familiar with this, you have to notify by a certain date that you will be stepping down. So that date is June 3rd, correct? Or July, it's June 3rd?
No, it's June 2nd.
It's 10 days before.
10 days prior to the qualifying date.
The 13th is the qualifying date, so the 3rd was 10 days before.
The 3rd to be timed.
Which I will get in before then to make sure there's no question, but, but I will still be serving all the way through the election, November 8th. And that was a question that different ones had had, so I just wanted to clarify that. And again, it really is a privilege, and, you know, we're, we've got another budget season ahead, and I'm hopeful that emerging from the COVID challenges that we've had, we're beginning to see good numbers, that we can really make some good advances forward, you know, in our priority list, so. Anyway, just wanted to clarify that. Bringing up the gopher tortoise day, I don't see why that wouldn't be something good to direct staff to pursue, it's a proclamation, and, and this really does say there are 360 species that basically because of the tortoise burrow, it enables them to thrive as well. So, you know, that's something that I don't think that can hurt us, that's, there's, you know, the other side of that question, but this, I think that's just, I don't see a problem in directing staff that we could go ahead and do that, but any discussion on that?
No, I, if other cities are doing it, and, and we all know that Florida gophers are precious.
So it's just an acknowledgement of that?
Mm-hmm.
So can we?
My, my other question would be, what's the difference between the resolution and the proclamation?
I think it's a proclamation.
Proclamation's just a formal proclamation, but if it's, if a resolution is, is the, an action by the city, the resolution memorializes the action of the city. So if it's, if you seek a resolution, proclamation is basically ceremonial, a resolution is official action of the city. So you wanna take the official action of declaring a gopher tortoise day, or April 10th is that, then be done by resolution, which is, which memorializes the official action.
So is it necessary to do a resolution on this or proclamation? Because I, I don't see any action other than recognition on this, so I don't know, proclamation suffices, but...
Well, I serve on the Orange County Executive Advisory Board, and a lot of the cities are doing it by resolution as opposed to by proclamation, so I would support us making a resolution.
So I'm...
And so that's the direction I would like to give staff.
It's either way, I mean, as I said, a proclamation, a resolution is, is the formal memorial... I mean, as I said, a proclamation, a resolution is the formal memorialization of official city action.
I would support the resolution.
Resolution.
We'll have one presented for consideration at the next city council meeting.
Awesome. Okay. Wrapping it up, again, I wanted to say congratulations to those, this was a passionate race, and that's always good in the sense of people standing for what they believe in and wanting to see those changes. I think the conversation moves us all to consider and ponder all the questions that are brought forward, and that's healthy for us. And again, to all those that won, congratulations, and I did want to say to Commissioner Becker, I thought it was, your statement earlier was just a really wonderful way to help. I liked your analogy, being in sports in the past, you know, even though I'm shorter than you, b-ball. But I appreciate that and respect that, thank you. And last, happy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow.
Commissioner Smith?
All right, I too would like to congratulate all those that was re-elected, including myself, to serve another term as city commissioner here in the City of Apopka, and enjoy being a servant and serving the people here in our great city. And once again, I'm going to say my closing remarks for Commissioner Becker at his last meeting, and I say those remarks at that time. So just want to say I support the fact that we are giving our citizens the option, allowing the city to do the backflow testing, as well as giving them the option, they want to have it done privately. Some of them want to do private contractors, others want the city to do it. So just want to make sure that they are aware that all they have to do is just call and inform the city that they want them to perform that test or the replacement. And so I think we're going in the right direction, and then we look forward to doing something different later on.
Okay, Mr. Becker?
So I just want to clarify, Commissioner Velasquez, when you say I came up with numbers, that makes it sound like I'm just grabbing numbers out of thin air. I did have some sort of fact finding.
You would take out that calculator, came up with numbers, and I'm like, okay.
Thanks, and again, I would like to offer congratulations to Commissioner-elect Nesta back there in the back of the room, I'm pointing, had a chance to make remarks on social media, but here in the room, congratulations. There's a certain legacy around seat four that's pretty interesting and pretty cool, so I look forward to passing the torch on to you and to your family, because really it's not about just you, or not about you just sitting in the seat, it really takes a village and a family to give you the backing that you needed to do the job successfully. So, like I said before, we're all rooting for you, me personally, because I'm so attached to it, you know, I'm really excited for you. And then, too, and you brought up Commissioner Velasquez, in terms of the Lake Apopka Natural Gas Board position, can we just get clarity on when that, this term ends there? Because I know it's on like a year or two-year cycle, I believe, and I think I took that on in May of 2018. I am pursuing career opportunities that would probably preclude me from doing that on an ongoing basis, so I would be likely to step down from that position. But I want to give their staff enough time to make that transition successfully. The Lake Apopka Natural Gas District is in a very good, solid business position right now, they're trending very favorably, it's, they're just in a very good spot. So I would look forward to passing, again, passing that torch on to another representative, either this council or whoever the council appoints. So if you can just get back to me on that one. But like I said, I would like to carve at least, you know, five, 10 minutes, you know, in our last meeting, or my last meeting in April, to put some closing remarks out there.
All right. Edward?
I just have a couple of things. I wanted to give you an update on fuel. As you know, fuel prices right now are off the charts. So we've been watching our budgets, city budgets with fuel, we're going to have to make an adjustment, I see that in the future. I don't know what meeting we will bring that to you at, right now we're okay, but I want to kind of see, let's get this month under us, next month under us, to kind of see where we're trending. So we'll be bringing you back another budget amendment for fuel, so that you know that. The other item that I have that I want to bring up is, Commissioner, this kind of affects you, we are looking to cancel the second meeting in April, that meeting, due to some staff issues, we have some staff people that are going to be out, so we were looking to cancel that meeting, and so that would be the twentieth, April the twentieth meeting, the night meeting. So, and we've got, community development has worked with all of our timing, things with everybody and everything, and we're okay on timing as far as ordinances, resolutions, and things like that. Again, it's a wishes of the council, but we are looking to cancel that meeting, with Becker, I think it's critical that we talk about this tonight, so that you'll know if people.
So remind me why we're canceling it?
So we have some staff, we have some staffing people that are going to be out, the attorney's going to be out, could be, myself, so, but, and then we've got a few other things. So, but again, it's a wish to the council, if you want to, we can still have the meeting.
I'm not going to burden the taxpayers by having people come in when we don't have anything on the agenda. I would just wish, I would have known that prior to tonight, I would have had family and friends come in the evening, because they're not going to be able to come during a day meeting, but that's okay.
We can have it, I mean, I'm just saying that, yeah, we won't have the attorney, but, yeah, so we can still have the meeting. I probably won't be here either, but that's okay, we can still have the meeting, you know, the items that we put on there.
But why are you coming up here and saying that most likely it was going to be canceled? And not to.
Well, we didn't have anything on it, so that's the only reason we were saying, and we've got, the attorney's not going to be here, I'm probably going to be out of pocket. So I think, you know, that's why we made that suggestion. Again, it's up to you, we can still have the meeting, we just won't have legal at that meeting, but we can plan everything on that meeting for that, for that, to make sure that we have what's covered.
I just think out of just the respect for that, we need to.
Okay.
Okay, absolutely.
But can we arrange the agenda so that?
Yeah, that's what we will do.
That require any legal action? Okay.
We will do that.
Okay, thank you, Edward. Michael?
I'll get up to address it. All right, yes, and to clarify, it is a scheduling conflict on my part. Usually, if I am unable to physically be here, I have attended a meeting by Zoom, but on that night, I actually cannot even, I cannot even attend by Zoom that night. It is a, it's a family matter that I really cannot miss, so that's the reason why, I mean, through staff, we've requested that the meeting be canceled, and we have, and we're making the arrangements, making the announcements now, that in the event of cancellation, we had enough time to provide notices, and if there's any notice of cancellation, that we had adequate time to provide that notice. But there is a, there is a scheduling conflict on my part that I cannot change, and that also has enabled me that I cannot attend via Zoom as I've done in the past. I mean, I was here at city council meetings, doing the city council meeting, sitting from my hospital bed a year ago, when I was in the hospital, but this is a matter that I cannot, I cannot miss. On the agenda, as part of my report, it was left on the agenda, and it says city charter. One of the things that staff is considering, and that has been also brought to my attention by some council members, are potential amendments to the city charter. I have already consulted with former colleagues of mine for advice on how to approach amendments to the city charter. And one of the things I just want to present to you today, I'm not asking for any official action, but I'm putting it on the council's radar, that this is something that we could be considering. Any amendments to be considered by the, for the city charter will be presented to the public to vote on at the general election of March 2024. So we don't intend to rush through this. So one of the things I'd like to put on your radar is to think of those topics to put into consideration for revisions to the city charter. One of the things that can be contemplated, and at the end, it's your final decision whether you want to create a charter revision committee to basically delegate the fact finding for the potential revisions, potential amendments to the charter. That will be something that will be brought back to you for a final vote, it would be done by resolution if you elect to create a committee, and then we can, that resolution will dictate how the committee is formed, who makes the appointments, how many members are on the committee. One of the things that I have been advised, and I will advise the city council, is that the council provide explicit direction to the committee as to those issues that you wish to address, usually in other cities and other jurisdictions that seek to create such charter revision committees. Without direction, that's a committee that gets lost in the weeds. As I've been told, a lot of times, some folks who are on committees have never read a city charter, and then it becomes, it just becomes so overbroad that it's hard to rein them back in to come up with succinct issues that are clear and concise to the voter, because at the end of the day, it is the people of Apopka who vote on whether or not to approve or deny amendments to the charter. So I'm putting it on the radar for you guys, to begin to think of those issues that you'd like to see, it's considered, and then at the appropriate time, we will then bring the matter as part of a resolution to create. One of the important things of giving you a timeframe in consultation with the supervisor of elections, when you create this process, you work backwards. So we have the March 2024 election, so we work backwards from that date as to how soon it is that we have to get the ballot language into the supervisor of elections. So that's your deadline for your committee, for you guys to act. Then we're going to work backwards from there as to when the committee has to present the final recommendations to the council for their vote, then that's approved, then we move forward from there. So the resolution, once we get a resolution, it should establish and set up all of the proper timelines for getting this done, so, but I wanted to put it on the radar for you, that this is something that has been contemplated. Now, again, if it's the council's prerogative to say, we love our charter, we don't want to make any changes, then that's where we're at. I mean, I, staff doesn't, you know, drive the car on this one. This is a council's decision, but we will, I'm giving you the, putting it on the radar for you guys to consider and to provide any suggestions, provide them to staff and provide them to me, and then we will begin the process of formulating potential revisions to the charter. So, if you have any questions, I mean, the broad questions, I'm not going to get into the weeds of the details of potential issues at this time, because I think it's extremely premature.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Appreciate it.
Okay, under the mayor's report, well, I'd like to thank everybody, you know, for the election, although I think we all agree we would love to have had, you know, forty percent turnout or sixty percent turnout, I think twenty percent is about normal across all the municipalities, you know, in the central Florida area, and I think probably across the state and country. But thank you to Commissioner Becker for his, those words, I thought those were very appropriate considering, you know, where we are today. Congratulations, Commissioner-elect Nesta, for, you'll get started here soon enough. To that end, I think we've got the data set for the, is it the twenty-fifth? Twenty-sixth at twelve o'clock, it'll be at the VFW, so plenty of seating, so come on down if you want to see the swearing-in ceremony. Okay, next up, Apopka International Jazz Festival, this Saturday, gates open at four. Just to make sure everybody is aware, this is a ticketed event, even though it's a Saturday night sound, or Saturday sounds, it will be a ticketed event, tickets from forty-five to one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Some great artists there Saturday night, Jeffrey Osborne, Hiroshima, Nester Torres, Dee Lucas, Lori Williams, and Andrew Mack. So for more information on that, still got tickets available, it's apopkinationaljazzfest.com. So go there, if it's, if you love jazz, it would be a great Saturday afternoon and evening for you. The same date, we also have the Veterans Gala, which will be at the VFW Hall, got our keynote speaker there is former Secretary of Agriculture Sonny Perdue, so he will be our, the keynote speaker for the Veterans Gala at the VFW. Next up, legislative update, House Bill fourteen thirty-one, which is our bill that will reduce the seating capacity and down from, and square footage down to an appropriate number where we think we can get more restaurants to come to the CRA in Apopka, so we're really excited about what it might drive opportunities here to Apopka and especially to the CRA zone. So I'd like to thank those who helped us get that through the legislature, now it's just waiting on the governor's signature for it to be law. Also, just got an update, the federal appropriation for the City of Apopka's Northwest Water Production Plant Water Storage Tank, it was in HR two-four-seven-one, included one-point-five million dollars for a new water tank for the City of Apopka. So thanks to Congresswoman Demmings and Senator Rick Scott and Marco Rubio for getting that over the finish line. Next up, just continuing to work with Orange County Sheriff's Office, Duke Energy, and Apopka, our police department, to get more cameras up in South Apopka, especially to, you know, try to help us control some of the crime going on, and so it's a great partnership between the three organizations, and hopefully we'll get some of those cameras up that will make a difference in the crime in that area. Dream Lake Baffle Box there on Laurel, it should be ready to go next week, so we're looking in to put in, you know, something for the kids to be able to keep measurements there for water quality, and so we're excited about that Dream Lake Baffle Box. And because there's really, there's only three sides of Dream Lake, we're looking to put in for some grants to finish the two other baffle boxes, which would then encircle Dream Lake, which is kind of the headwaters for Wekava, so it's a really important lake that if we can try to get that as clean as possible, I think it's good not only for Dream Lake, but also for the Wekava Basin. You also have in front of you a, the appraisal on the Sumner property, Gator Growers property, so I'm going to bring it back next, the next commission meeting to look at, maybe trying to purchase that. The appraisal came in, I want to say it's seven-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand or something thereabouts. And then Jim, Jim just kind of did a rudimentary kind of a, what it would look like, you know, if we were to purchase it, what we could put there, and then, one of the nice things about it, you can see where it says the gate, the gate could be, you know, opened or closed based on whether you've got overnight campers, which I think would make it a real asset when you've got overnight campers staying at Camp Weewah, and you want to limit access to Camp Weewah, you could still have access to Lake Shepherd. So that will be coming up at the next council meeting. On highway construction, just so you know, US four-four-one resurfacing from the four-twenty-nine connector road to Jones Avenue, it's an FDOT project, and we also have a road widening from State Road four-twenty-nine from West Road to State Road four-fourteen, from four lanes to six lanes. This is a CFX project. So we got a lot of things going on, and things are looking up. So I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and with that.